Mayan Nose Verification. Okay, Brennan, want to listen to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And how about Caitlin, you want to give us our mission statement?
Serve with passion to ignite creativity, innovation, and excellence.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, looks like we're counted for. All of our teams? Okay. Minus one student rep. Alright, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Alright, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we have an agenda. First up is going to be District Strategic Initiatives update by the Superintendent Collaborative Team and Ryan Reber. Board, do we have questions on those reports? Anything that we want to know more about? Alright, Ryan, what else would you like to tell us?
Um, just an update, excuse me, on the four-way stop. The four-way stop up here at Hamlin and Leonard is almost complete. Um, they will be putting in a push-button crossing for the pedestrian traffic. Uh, I talked to Chief Olo here last week. Um, that should be coming in in the next couple of weeks or so, and at that point then we'll, uh, there's some conversations that we'll have within the district as well as police as far as coverage for that in the morning and afternoon when schools dismissed, but uh, we had a pretty good conversation on that intersection and initially when it went up, I think it was kind of a shock to some people. Uh, but since then, I can just, I can attest to, as you're coming to school here in the morning from that way, it's a lot smoother, it's a lot safer. Um, we don't have a block and a half long backup, uh, and so it was a good welcome addition, so uh, that's going well. Um, we are starting conversations with ISG, uh, specifically with some user groups here within district, uh, looking at spaces Friday afternoon. Uh, Justin and myself and Alyssa and Cody, uh, spent some time with ISG discussing possibilities for uh, when, you know, classrooms from the interior of the current high school building get moved out to the exterior in the new space, you know, what we possibly could do, and I know Justin and his team are having further discussions on those classrooms and the usage for those. Uh, and I know Justin will probably give an update here later when we get to board development, and he was traveling the state today, uh, looking at some programs that were, uh, going on for CTE, so, and I'm sure Brennan's going to talk about the semester flip here coming up, and so I will leave the rest to him as far as the student section of this goes.
Okay, thanks Ryan. Board, do we have any other questions before we move on to item B? Alright, then Business Operations Committee update, Tom?
Okay, so what we did is we had a meeting here and we had our bids come in for construction managers. We had two. And after a lot of discussion, consideration, um, we selected Kraus Anderson, or the, the Business Ops Team selected Kraus Anderson that we will, uh, bring in front of the board for full approval, uh, as our construction manager.
Okay, thanks Tom. I guess if there's any questions on that, we can take it further down on the agenda. Alright, um, next up is CISA Board of Control update. Uh, we met last Wednesday at CISA Four in West Salem. Uh, we approved the December financial statements. Uh, we discussed the, uh, convention resolutions because CISA Four is also a voting member at the delegate convention in Milwaukee next week. We also, uh, conducted our evaluation year-end of the, our administrator, and, uh, accepted the administrator's report where he talked about, um, the state superintendent race, um, the work that CISA Four is doing on, um, our ALPS K-nine, K through nine licensure program. And we set our next meeting as February 5th, 6:30 at CISA in West Salem. Any questions? Alright. Next up is item D, what we're going to talk about, our here report on the emergency purchase of the elementary school boiler.
I asked Scott Johnson to come here this evening because, uh, over our, uh, holiday break, uh, Scott did, Scott and his team, I should say, spent an awful lot of their time here on campus. Uh, we did purchase a new boiler for the elementary school, uh, per board policy 6320. Um, the emergency, with emergency purchases, uh, what it says in that policy is over that, over our break, um, we did make an executive decision to do an emergency purchase for a new boiler at the elementary school, and so in following, in accordance with that policy, we're here to report about that purchase this evening, so. Scott, uh, if you want to come up and, and share, uh, the adventures of holiday break.
Yeah, it was, it was an adventure. Um, so, just before break, uh, boiler number one had gone down. Um, and, uh, my contractor that I used, I went out to bid last year for preventive maintenance. Um, we use a contractor called Complete Controls, they came, found that, uh, the one boiler, uh, was not lighting correctly. And what I learned from all that is when the initial install happened, they had the same issues that were going on, so there's a, the company has a lot of records of the initial issues that were happening back when they were installed, so. They're only about five years old. Um, in my investigation, along with a number of other area districts and that, there are not very many of these boilers, this name-brand boiler around, most people didn't even hear of, heard of them before, so. Uh, they're based out of the country. Um, nobody had parts for them, so we had to order parts out of the country, and that took a long time for lead time. Well, then on the morning of December 23rd, we came in and found that boiler number two had ruptured its heat exchanger and was leaking internally, and we lost the water out of the system, so. Uh, we worked for that, that full day, and into the next day, Christmas Eve, trying to get, uh, two, two-piced into one. Uh, we were unsuccessful. Uh, again, a lot of calling around and researching and trying to find parts and stuff like that, so. Um, we did get some parts on order, but they hadn't come in yet. I was able to call Fowler and Hammer, and they brought a couple of construction heaters for us that we could use. Um, and so we set those up on Christmas Eve morning. Uh, Cooley Region Mechanical came and ran gas piping for us. So by about 2 o'clock on Christmas Eve afternoon, we had heat in the building so that we could keep it from freezing. Um, throughout the 10 days of this issue, the, the building never went below 60 degrees, so that was nice. So, um, Christmas, Christmas Day, we were here making sure that things were working okay, uh, for the day. Um, we did keep going on, on Thursday, even though in Canada it's Boxing Day, so we could not get a hold of factories, so they had their own holiday mixed in there too, so. You think about the 10 days that we're working on this, we had two weekends, and essentially five, five holiday days into there, so. Um, by the time we got to Friday, we were getting down to the very end of trying to figure out how we were going to get heat into the building other than just that temporary heaters that we had set up, so. Um, talking to Sean and Ryan and myself and our contractor, we did a, a lot of calling around, again emailing, and found a boiler through Complete Controls and Fluid Handling out of Milwaukee. We found a boiler in Nashville. Uh, regular commercial boilers aren't just sitting on the shelves waiting to be picked up, so. We did find one. Uh, got it sent up here. It arrived on Tuesday morning, New Year's Eve morning, about 5:30 in the morning. And we worked to get it hoisted up into the mechanical room. Uh, Kerry Specialist came and helped us move it. Um, this new boiler is a name-brand boiler that most districts in the area use. Parts are readily available, I can go to first supply and get almost any part for this boiler, so. We know they're local, and our contractors can continue to work on them, so. By, uh, Wednesday afternoon, on New Year's Day, we had everything piped and ready to go and fired up, and the building was back to normal by Thursday morning, so. A lot of staff came in and didn't even realize that mu- much went on for those 10 days, so. Uh, myself and my staff probably had close to 80 hours in those 10 days, so. So it was, it was a chaos, and I learned a ton, and we're still working on the warranty side of it. We've been calling and emailing. They've been real reluctant to give any information, they asked for a ton of information, um, to use for their decision, and it's, what I've gotten back so far is, we probably won't get hardly anything out of it. Any questions?
I, I don't have a question, Scott, but just on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank you and your staff for going above and beyond. Um, without you guys' efforts, we might not have had school, so, thank you.
Well, I reiterate the same thing Catherine just said, um, but I did have a question that popped up. You said boiler one, boiler two, we ordered one boiler, do we, are we missing a second yet?
We're working on getting the second one up and running, we're just waiting on parts.
Okay, okay.
I can't believe an igniter's can't be found anywhere locally, but.
So what you're saying is, we got the one new boiler from Nashville, and then we're trying to piece together the second boiler from, from the two ones that?
Yep, as a standby for now until we decide what we're going to do with that one.
So is there any possibility of possibly looking into another boiler with the match the one we just put in?
Yep, yep, we can get those.
Okay. Alright, just wondering.
Yeah, they have that spec'd out already, we just have to give the okay.
We've had conversations, and obviously with, um, you know, anticipating the beginning of construction and whatnot this summer at the elementary school, uh, there's going to be the timeliness of all this, and so finding one and making sure that we do, uh, have another one installed, um, prior to the beginning of any construction back there would be advantageous to everybody, and, um, you know, the board has already indicated this, but I think it's, you know, if there was a good time for something to happen, um, this was probably the best time for something to happen. Um, not for Scott and his team, 100%, um, but, you know, like, like Scott had indicated, when, when the staff and the students came back Thursday morning, unless you, you know, were reading the emails and the updates and everything that was coming, if you weren't reading those, you wouldn't have known that anything happened. And so I think that's just a great, a tribute to Scott and the time and effort that him and his team put in to make sure that, you know, we could start school on January 2nd without missing a beat, so. Um, you know, Scott, very appreciative of everything that you and your team did.
Well, it was, it was mostly the team. Uh, they were there the entire time, always calling, checking in, seeing what they could help out with, so. I have a great team with us.
The two boilers that failed, do we have any more of those anywhere else in the district?
There's a small one in the shop, yeah.
Is it on your radar?
Yes.
I just, in addition to all the work, I appreciate that you took time to document and kind of explain everything at a LA person level too, that was useful for, for me anyway.
I kept a running record of everything that was going on, so. For our own documentation for future.
Again, Scott, we appreciate it, so make sure that your, your team hears that from us as well.
They will, thanks.
Alright, looks like, uh, Connection with Community Section is next, and our board reports. Brennan, what do you have for us tonight?
Uh, the National Honor Society had their giving tree up for the holiday season at the high school, and 170 tags were collected for a total of $6,300 in gift cards that were donated to families in need. Last Friday night, Senior Megan Johnson hosted an Alzheimer's Awareness Night during the Boys and Girls Basketball doubleheader. This included a bake sale and a miracle minute to raise money. Both of the girls and boys' teams won against Luther. Back on January 4th, the boys' basketball team played against Verona, and Senior Kyle Haley hit, uh, 1,000 career points. Over winter break, the wrestling team participated in the annual By State Tournament at the Lacrosse Center. A team finished fifth out of 25 teams, along with four wrestlers placing individually in their weight class. There will be a duel against Sparta at the middle school tomorrow night. Show choir teams had their first competition on the 4th at Toma. The Salem Sensations finished third, and Viva Chi finished sixth. Sid Martin and Kaylee Curran earned the showstopper award. The dance team competed in Kokona on Saturday. They placed in the top half with both of their team routines. And, uh, the semester for the high school comes to an end this week Friday. Then the students will have off Monday while the staff finish up and reset. And then on Tuesday, uh, there'll be a CCLR day, uh, half-day, and then the other half of the day for the students is running through their new schedules.
Okay, thank you Brennan, a lot going on. Board, do we have any questions for Brennan? Alright, we'll move on. Um, next up is correspondence, and there wasn't anything in the packet for tonight. So we'll move on to public comment at board meetings per board policy 167.3. Pat, do we have anyone? Okay. We'll then move to the consent agenda, that's going to include minutes of the regular board meeting of December 9th, 2024, invoices to be paid, co-curricular recommendations for middle school basketball, donations, uh, hiring a superintendent school board executive assistant, and WIAA co-op agreements for girls' hockey, girls' wrestling, boys' wrestling, boys' swim, and gymnastics. And I'll read our donations, there's a pretty substantial list tonight. The Nutrition Services slash Jane Doe Fund received donations from the following. Union State Bank for $250. Lacrosse County Community Contribution Committee, $100. Nutrition Services also received following donations to assist families in need over the Christmas break. Compeer Financial for $200. Joshua and Whitney Westbrook for $250. An anonymous donor for $1,110. The Random Acts of Kindness Fund received donations from the following. Lacrosse County Community Contribution Committee for $100. Cynthia and William Ennis for $40. Letta Gar Roofing, $2,500. West Salem Lions Club, $1,311.66. The High School, uh, FFA Club received a donation of $250 from Compeer Financial. Angela LaBuce Memorial Scholarship Fund received a donation of $60 from Duane and Anna Shaper. Special Education Department received a $536.79 donation from the Wisconsin State Council Knights of Columbus. Elementary School received a donation of $1,000 in memory of Rosalyn Kryuski? Kryuski, thanks. The Horace Moran Memorial Scholar, or Memorial Fund received a donation of $25 from Steven and Deborah Kraus. And the Elementary School LMC received a donation of $200 Visa gift card and books valued at $100 from Jane Banksburg. Lots of generous donors.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Alright, consent agenda carries. We'll move on, uh, to discuss, consider, and take action if appropriate regarding strategic initiatives. Item A being open enrollment limits for 24, 25 for special education and regular education. And that's on your packet, aye, I think, aye.
Alright, to begin this before I turn it over, first off, thank you because I'm a little worried because Jen Larson is here tonight, so if, uh, that item in the consent agenda wouldn't have passed, there'd been some egg on my face, so. Welcome Jen. Um, before we start going to, uh, talking about, um, open enrollment limits, just a reminder to the board that this is the one, this first board meeting is where we're giving you a preview of what we're looking at as far as open enrollment caps. Um, what I do have is for all of you, class-sized guideline sheets that the board has set, um, you know, that we, that we look at when we're making these. The reason why we don't set the caps at this meeting tonight is because we had our second Friday count in January on Friday. Those numbers aren't finalized yet, so we'll have those finalized numbers for us at the next board meeting, which is where we will set open enrollment caps. Just a reminder for everybody, um, one of the things that we do here is, um, you know, obviously we do have some open enrollment caps here at the elementary school, middle school, special education areas, just so we don't, um, we can manage, uh, our staffing as, as we go along with that, so. Uh, Bob, if you have extras, I'll take them, and then I'll pass them out to the rest of my team too, and Brennan can have one, so he knows what we're talking about. So with that, um, and that as a guideline, um, I believe the first one that we have up is Heidi. And we'll just go through these, and any questions that you may have, and we'll give a brief overview because we'll probably get more in-depth with these, uh, in two weeks.
Okay, so, um, I am excited to talk to you about open enrollment caps tonight. What we do in special education is when someone applies for open enrollment, we look at them under the regular education cap first, to see if there's, um, space in the grade level. But then we look at the program the student would be served in based upon their IEP. So it's never about the disability or the impairment itself, it's always about the program that that student would require and the services they would need. So if you look at Attachment I in your, um, on your screen, what you'll see is, the first page is, um, what I look at as far as projected, uh, special education staffing for next year as compared to, again, a projected caseload based on the current number of students who are in special education, um, including a number of special education referrals that were in progress prior to the meeting tonight. Um, and for speech and language, it also includes, um, students served in the private schools. Where you see the word weighted, in case you have a question about that, um, when I look at the student needs with the special ed teachers, we look at what is the expected level of need for that program versus a, uh, student's actual needs, and because some students have more needs than others, a couple of these spots are weighted, and that's why the ratio looks a little bit different for you. The recommended max column is, um, something that years ago the board had talked about as far as, once we start going well above that limit, we're looking at additional staffing. So we try to set our, um, programs in that range, within one or two of that range. Okay, and as you can see, some of our programs are already full. So that is, when you go to the next page, um, where it says school district, or the bottom of the page, where it says school district of, of West Salem, and it talks about the process that we use to determine if we can accept students or not. Um, the, the bottom graph shows you how many openings that we would have. I guess it's the, the third page of Attachment I. Can you see it? Okay. Um, so right now, we would have a projected two seats in our early childhood program. Uh, NA at Middle and High School, that program isn't offered. Okay. And then, um, when you look at our cross-categorical program, which serves the most numbers of students across the district, um, we are, uh, four openings basically in the grade three program right now. Um, and in the middle school, we would have four openings in the grade five program, the way that those are currently laid out. And at the high school, we would have none. The elementary is the only, uh, building that we're offering a full EBD program. Um, by middle school, those students are generally going into a cross-categorical program. Um, so we have no spots right now at the elementary. And at the, um, elementary, we have one spot available in our intellectual disability program, zero in that program at middle and high school, and then in speech and language, we will have four openings for, across the district due to, um, some special education dismissals we've had, had this year. Um, so we have actually, I think, a few more openings this year in open enrollment than we did last year. Any questions?
Thanks for the explanation Heidi, I don't see any questions.
Okay, and I'll turn it over to Alex, and he can just go through some preliminary stuff with the elementary school.
Yep, so at the elementary school, um, if you look at the elementary school professional staff capacity document, the multicolored one, um, you'll see blank for 4K right now, we're still working on, um, getting those numbers in, and we're actually looking at, there's some districts around us that do, um, some earlier surveys to, to get a better sense earlier on before registration, and we're looking to do something similar because that really helps with kind of the staffing picture, so. Um, we did have, we do have the internal census that we can run, which basically pulls students, um, of current students that we have, siblings of, of current students that we have, um, and, and get that number. So that was pretty similar, um, when we pulled it last year at about this time, um, to what we have now, so. Um, you know, potentially looking at a similar-sized class, um, but hopefully gaining more. Um, and then kindergarten is also, um, there's some predictions in there. Um, you look at kind of the past, past years and see how many kids we pick up from 4K to kindergarten. Um, we picked up as men, three years ago, it was, I think, 42 that we gained, and, um, last year it was about 28, so. Um, a, a little bit of an estimate in there with the 95 number. Um, and then what I did kind of for the rest of that is just laid out. Um, you can look at currently the number of sections we have, you can look at the numbers, um, you know, what it would do to class sizes with different numbers of sections in this preliminary part, so if we had five sections, um, with that number, there'd be class sizes of 19, um, which is at that upper range. Um, if we, you know, stayed at six sections in kindergarten, um, class sizes would be at 16 or 15, um, with, with kindergartners. Moving up to first grade then, um, uh, similar, currently we have six, six sections, so if we were there, class sizes in first grade would be at 15 or 16, similarly. Um, if we went to five sections there, be at 18 or 19. Second grade, 115 students in that class, um, looking at six sections for next year. Um, with a cap of 11, so a pretty good number, number there. And in third grade, um, that's another one we want to look at. Um, so, we currently have six sections in third grade, and if we stayed at six sections, um, we'd be at 23 or 22 students, which is, um, above our, our kind of target and above the range that we looked at, and if you look at the far left there, uh, 21 would be kind of the upper end of that. Um, if we went to seven sections in third grade, we'd be at 19 or 20 students a section. And then finally in fourth grade, we're, we're doing good with six sections still, um, at 22 or 21 students per class. So obviously, you know, with that, we're, some more discussions and conversations to be had there. Um, we also kind of look at, you know, staffing and who's where and all of that that goes into making some of those decisions when we get down to it, but I just wanted to provide kind of the first glance at that for you all and, and kind of what, what different numbers of sections does to those class sizes. Any questions?
So I guess in this overall report, you're in, everything I see is good, all except for third grade, that it looks like we may need to add another section?
Potentially, if we wanted to stay in that range, yep.
And then we're hiring another teacher for that?
Not necessarily, I mean, that, that's where the, where you have some wiggle room in some other way, uh, other grades, those lower grades, where you could potentially shift people, or it wouldn't necessarily need to be a, a new person, it might just be some shifting of staff. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, with the middle school update, I'll turn it over to Ben.
Thank you. Uh, I'll start on the left, uh, my, my document looks similar to the elementary schools, but on the left, you can see the grade level Board of Education guidelines. But really, at the middle school, we, we use 25 as a class size, as kind of that target. Uh, fifth grade is 23, but really overall, 25 in the building is, is what we use. Um, and then we're looking at six sections with 150 students, it's kind, kind of the ballpark of where we've run over the years. Sometimes it's, runs a little under that, sometimes we go a little bit over, but right around that 150 mark. Um, as you can see, uh, what we were projected this year and then what the actual is this year, that's in purple next to each other, and so we've got fifth grade, um, projected at 112, and the actual is 119. got fifth grade, um, projected at one-twelve, and the actual is one-nineteen. Sixth, projected was one-thirty-one, and the actual is one-thirty-eight. Um, and then underneath those numbers, you can see OE, that's the open enrollment. So that's very simply, uh, one-fifty minus one-thirty-eight is twelve. So we have twelve open enrollment spots, for example, in sixth grade this year. Seventh grade underneath that, currently at one-thirty-two, and that's why open enrollment's at eighteen. And eighth grade, one-forty-four, open enrollment at six. And so then we move to projected for next year. The one-forty-four is gone because those are freshmen. The one-thirty-two moves down to eighth grade. The one-thirty-eight moves down to seventh. The one-nineteen moves down to sixth. And then the fourth graders cross the street, and that's the new group at the one-thirty-seven that you can see on the top. One-fifty minus one-thirty-seven is open enrollment of thirteen. So that's how the OE, the numbers next to that, that's how we get to that. Last year was decided that the current fifth grade group was small enough that, um, the board did not put a cap on that class. Okay? And then we project over one more year, and, and we just follow that process one more time. Uh, and then you can see the current third graders crossing the street, and that's where you get the one-hundred-and-thirty. That's where they're currently at. Any questions for me?
I just had kind of an observation. I guess this, what we see in fifth and sixth grade is thirty-ish percent higher than what's coming into kindergarten. Cycling through, is that, that's kind of what the census data shows to, in terms of community. Is that what you expect to con, do you think the, the lower numbers are an aberration, or do we expect that to kind of bump up to, to somewhere in between? Or do we have any, any sense of where that's going?
We had, we did an applied population lab study here a year ago. Um, you know, it does show a slightly declining enrollment, about one percent per year. Obviously, when we start looking at the early ages of the elementary school, you know, one low class is kind of an anomaly. Uh, we did see that first anomaly with our current fifth grade, soon to be sixth grade next year. They have picked up numbers. I mean, when they were in first grade, I believe that class was like at ninety-three. Um, and so they've picked up numbers. But one of the things that we are watching is we have a, you know, a two-b low first grade class. We have a two-b low kindergarten class, and, uh, you know, this 4K class. So, you know, we're talking about some things. But one year is okay. When you start to collect years together, then that starts to become a trend that we want to make sure that we're very observant of and watching going forward. And so, um, obviously, the low numbers at, you know, currently at kindergarten on 4K, um, and soon to be first grade kindergarten, we'll see what 4K is, uh, slightly concerning. Um, but it, it's not completely outside of the realm of that a po, applied population lab study we did a year ago. But it's just, it's definitely something that we're watching and keeping an eye on. And so we have, we have some talks about what we could do, um, district-wide in the future, once we do have some space at the elementary school with the new gym. What are some ways in which we could get creative to look to bump up some of those 4K numbers? And, uh, we can talk about that at a later date.
For that population study, do we take any projections or forecasts for the colony land?
When they did that a year ago, there's still, and in everything I've heard, there still isn't any, you know, set plans, uh, for what's going to happen there. But, um, obviously, it looks at, you know, what the growth of an area is. And, um, but I think, you know, there's, obviously, there's not as many kids being born. Um, and the housing market in West Salem isn't, uh, you know, very conducive for a, a young family to move into. And so those are some things we have going against us. Um, but, you know, one of the things we do have going for us is we do have a healthy and a robust open enrollment in population, uh, which, you know, we want to make sure that we continue to have happen by providing, you know, high-quality programming and, and, uh, opportunities for our kids with the high-quality staff that we have. And so we have that going for us. Um, but these are things that we want to make sure that we, uh, keep watching. Any questions for any of the people that presented here this evening? So obviously, when we come back on the twenty-third, uh, we will be, twenty-seventh, excuse me, right? Yeah, two weeks from today. Um, we'll be providing final caps, which are things that we'll set, um, or the board will set. So if we get above at a certain amount, then, uh, that provides us the opportunity to tell people, no, um, you can't come in because we don't have room because of, we don't want to overload a classroom because of our staff. So.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on? All right. Uh, next up is item B, uh, construction manager for building projects. Tom, you mentioned that in your update for building and grounds, you want to recap that again?
Okay. So for buildings and grounds, we all voted to recommend the hiring of Kraus Anderson as our construction manager. That's really it?
And that was after a competitive bid process?
Correct.
Okay.
Did you expect to see more than two bids come in on that, or is this?
The RFP went out to about nine different companies. Um, one of the things that was put in that RFP is that, uh, agencies wouldn't self-perform. Um, and so obviously, with some of the companies that it went to, I think they're hoping to get or be awarded some of the bids, um, in, in the construction process. So they were through, um, and they just let us know. So, um, you know, that's, that's kind of, that's the reasoning why we didn't have more, because we weren't looking for someone to construction manage and self-perform.
I think that's a good call out. I think the significant distinction here is we're hiring a construction manager that'll be at risk for the contract amount, not a general contractor, um, which will give the construction managers the ability to take bids from multiple people that perform as generals and self-perform to do different trade work. And that opens up a pretty wide list of bidders for us, so.
Could you provide just a couple of high-level points on why you decided on Kraus?
I will. Um, when we sent it out, there was, uh, certain requirements that had to be met and on the bid coming in. Um, so we, we gave notice, we put the requirements, and, um, one fulfilled the requirements, one did not. And we didn't think it was fair to go back and try and change it when we put the guidelines out there.
Accurate.
And just, we did, um, ask, go back and ask for a sharpening of the pencil on the percentage, and we were able to get, uh, slightly lower percentage. So it seemed Kraus Anderson was willing to work with us. So it seemed like the right choice.
Thanks. Sean, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Kraus Anderson as the construction manager for our building project.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion or questions? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carried. Next up is item C, our twenty-twenty-five delegate assembly proposals.
Uh, this is enclosed because I believe, Bob, did you receive the delegate packet? Caitlin did? Okay. So then maybe we, we just need to name Caitlin as a delegate assembly rep at the convention next week.
Uh, this is also an opportunity to discuss any of the resolutions that are in here. If the board feels a certain way that we would want to encourage Caitlin to vote, this would be the time to do so.
In the past, sometimes the delegates don't agree with it, what's in the packet. So if there's something that you don't agree with it, you don't have to vote on that. At the last time, I think one time I went down, you voted that I should be able to, to, to vote in the delegation the way I, I saw fit, and I gave arguments for that, and I did. So if there's anything in the packet you're going down representing, you don't feel comfortable with it, then no, that's an option.
Yeah, I should note, there are some boards that discuss these in depth and then specifically direct their delegate as to how they want them to vote. Typically, in West Salem, we maybe had some discussion on the proposals, but have, I think, almost always allowed the delegate to vote however they see fit when they're there. Because sometimes there's amendments that will get passed that changes the resolutions a little bit. And so you might not like it initially, but then an amendment would make it something that you'd want to vote yes on. So are there any on here that we'd want to have some discussion on? Or would someone like to make a motion that Caitlin vote as she, she sees fit when she's there as our delegate?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to have Caitlin, um, vote as she sees fit while at the delegate assembly.
Second.
Go ahead.
Okay. We'll take Bob Menard's second. All right. Any additional discussion before we vote?
I just say, as we look at some of these and as I look through them, some things that particularly could be impactful for our district. When you look at resolution twenty-five oh-six, uh, early childhood education funding, um, and, and public-private partnerships, that's essentially starting to deal with 4K funding. Um, currently, right now, we only get sixty percent funding for 4K students. And if there's ever the, the discussion or the desire to go to full-time 4K, uh, just the district would, you know, essentially eat forty percent of the funding of, of a student, um, in going forward with that. And there's many districts that currently do that right now. Uh, and you're seeing a, a wide, you know, a greater number of districts go to that full-time 4K because of the, the childcare needs that are within, uh, the communities, and they're willing to, you know, take sixty percent funding. Uh, but what, what's ended up happening is by going full-time 4K, that sixty percent funding is there ended up pushing off those ancillary costs and essentially breaking even, um, and providing a service for, for communities. So I think it would be advantageous for the West Salem School District, looking forward to the future, if we would ever go to a full-time 4K program, if the state does offer full-time funding for a 4K student.
Thanks, Ryan. We actually had some discussion on that at the CISA meeting too, and that if this were to pass in the legislature, because remember the WASB, um, delegate assembly is just an advisory committee, um, that, that wouldn't necessarily mandate that a district would have to offer 3K and 4K. It would provide funds available to do so.
I guess there's another one on here, resolution twenty-five oh-eight regarding the accountability of school report cards. Um, I, I'd love to see that changed, where we're just going off of our achievement and not some quasi-convoluted system. So we're just doing it on our merits. Because I really don't agree with the high school, how they, they judge us on the ACT and not on the high school students' achievement.
Having been at the delegate assembly a few times, I can almost guarantee that this one is going to be one that has several amendments, and it might take a while.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Anything final before we vote? All right. All in favor to, uh, Caitlin to, uh, vote how she sees fit at the delegate assembly next week?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next up is our first reading of policy eighty-five hundred food services.
Okay. So eighty-five hundred is Neola's policy for food services. Um, we had adopted our policy eighty-five hundred dot one and eighty-five hundred dot two. This would bring, um, some of the unique language that was in ours, combined with Neola's eighty-five hundred policy, which allows us to have one policy. So we technically be replacing our two with this one. But things like the Jane Doe Fund got moved into the Neola policy. So, um, it's one of those instances where we've got some unique things going on, and it's important when we adopt Neola policies in replacement of ours, that we make sure if there's things we want to carry over or carry on. And so that language got copied verbatim out of our existing policies and inserted into eighty-five hundred.
So how does Neola handle that when we've got some specifics to us that don't apply to the rest of the districts? Do we, just curious?
Well, first off, the one thing that you'll always hear Neola say is that there are policies, and so that we have the choice to do what we want to do with our policies. So when we first adopted the Neola, as Eric was saying, there are, I don't know, Pat, I would say, two, three dozen, maybe a few more policies that we kept from our old policy book and moved them into Neola. Well, the unpaid meal account and the Jane Doe Funds were two of those. Um, you know, obviously, when you look around districts, uh, it's not uncommon to have, you know, unpaid meal account, and it's not uncommon to have Jane Doe Funds. And so in, in conversing with Emily, uh, we just felt that in, it provided us an opportunity to streamline and put them all into one policy. And when you have your own separate policies, when Neola does their legal updates and their technical changes, they don't look at the policies that are directly specific to us because they're not in Neola's policies, they're our policies. So what, uh, you know, I'm in the process of doing now, thanks to Pat, Pat pulled, uh, all of the policies that are specific to us. And so I'll be working with the policy committee, and we'll bring those back to see if there's any, um, overlap, or if we can, you know, merge or dovetail some of our old policies into current policies. So when there are legal updates, then they're not left out there dangling with something that could be in there. And so part of the reason why this got brought up is because of the non-discrimination language. Um, and so rather than come back and ask the board to put that non-discrimination language into two policies, we just felt it was better to put it into an existing policy that Neola would update.
So even though it's got language that's specific to unpaid meal account and Jane Doe Fund, Neola would update, provide updates for us based on any legal recommendations?
Well, those are our current policies. So anything within that, if there's any changes, we would get, we would get some update with that because Neola does have some unpaid meal language. And so we would see that when it comes through. And obviously, a Jane Doe account is something specific to each district. And as long as we're handling those funds in a legal way, then there isn't anything that's going to transpire with any ver, you know, Neola won't go in and change that, that language of a Jane Doe Fund. It's just making sure that we follow those in a legal way, and the board voted on these policies.
Yeah. I guess what I was asking was, when we put these in here and then we adopt them as a Neola policy, does Neola at least read them if there's any flags that come up? Is that how that works?
They'll look at their own, go ahead.
Yeah, they'll look at eighty-five hundred, their policy, and provide any legal updates based on statutory changes, legislative changes to the core content of eighty-five hundred.
Okay. So that's just a reminder that we could be really careful.
It'd be on us to make sure we don't have conflicts or anything in there that we insert that conflicts with what they provide.
But they don't go in and change our verbias.
They do not.
So they know, they know, so there's a standard, and then they know that there's a difference, differentiation for our, our district. And so our, like Ryan said, our policies are our policies. Yep.
Okay. Thanks for hearing those questions. Do we have any other questions on policy eighty-five hundred first reading? We need a motion to approve though, right? Did I miss that? Okay. Keep things moving along, then I can make the motion to approve for first reading?
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Next is our list of to-do items and information requests. Ryan, what do we want to take note of that's changed?
Um, just a couple of things that are coming off about the OPEB and the cost benefit of changing the pool system. We did- We did report on that. And Heidi and I will review this open enrollment policy just for, what we'll be doing today during closed session to make sure that that language that we have is up to date. Although I do like our process of what we will do in closed session as far as possible revoking of an open enrollment and having the board approve that. But we'll just double-check that with our policy language.
Do you have any updates on the wall of honor?
Not yet. I'll make sure that I sit with Justin, and we'll have an update by the end of February.
Okay. Board, anything else on the to-do items? All right. If not, this would end our live stream portion, and we would continue on with board development, where we'll talk about high school graduation requirements, career and technical edu, and technology education elective options in a closed session. To discuss considering if appropriate, take action pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen-nine-eight-five-one All right. So we'll take a short recess, and then we'll convene into board development. Thanks.